Can I please ask everybody to rise so we can salute the flag?
Alleged allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The clerk will roll call the members.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Judith Garcia, absent. Counselor Tenere Garcia.
Present.
Counselor Lopez.
Here.
Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Counselor Recupero. Counselor Vito.
Present.
Counselor DeJesus. Absent. Counselor Haddelberg.
Here.
Counselor Vega.
Absent.
Counselor Taylor.
Here.
Eight members present, you have a call.
Chair recognizes Counsel Haddelberg.
I'd like to ask for a suspension of the rules so that we can ask the Collins Center to come present. I apologize to the people present, however, she's, she has to hop on a plane and so we're trying to accommodate her schedule.
Seeing no objection, so move, then I can ask the Mary from the Collins Center to address the counsel, please.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
No.
No, okay. I'm usually very loud. So is this on?
Mary.
I have to get closer? I can do that? Okay. All right, is that better? All right. Well, good evening, congratulations to all the people being promoted and appointed. I'm an HR director in a civil service community in the past, so I know how hard you've worked, so congratulations. So, I'm here before you, I believe you all received the letter from the Collins Center asking for two things. I want to give you a quick update on the city manager's search. We have received candidates, many exceptionally educated and experienced people. Not enough meet your qualifications in accordance with your profile and the charter provisions. So what we would like to do is extend the deadline, do a little bit more work to do some recruitment. And, we have found in our outreach and direct recruitment that many people are saying the salary listed is insufficient to make them move from their jobs. So rather than put in a specific pay, we would like to change the language in the profile to say a competitive employment package will be entered into with the city council depending on qualifications. That way you don't need to choose the amount right now without having any idea the experience or years or the direct experience of the candidates that the screening committee moves forward. The screening committee has worked diligently together to work on this process and I want to thank them for that. But we believe at this point if we say depending on qualifications, that really puts it to this body at the time to come up with the recommended employment package. And that could be everything from wages to cell phones to travel, there's all things that go into a package like that. And I would not want to presume those things for you as a body at this point. So what we're asking you to do is authorize us to extend the deadline and change the language to the depending on qualifications for the right candidate. I'm happy to answer any questions that...
We're not going to ask any questions at this time. Not at this time, we're going to discuss it.
When will we discuss it? With the Collins?
During the meeting tonight.
She won't be here, I think she's leaving.
All right, what's your question, counsel?
Yes, thank you, Ms. President. Can you tell us on the price that you said the price or the amount was not sufficient for the candidates? Can you tell us what you, that number was?
Yes, in your voted profile, you voted $200,000 per year, plus or minus.
Right, and also with other variables, cellphone, car?
That was not specified in the profile as it is now. We would just say a competitive package, so that opens the door for you to make some of those vacation entitlements. That way by saying the package versus just the salary, you might, you know, engender a more productive conversation in bargaining.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I just find it really inappropriate to have this conversation right now and I'm wondering if when the communication comes up, maybe we can further discuss this in a subcommittee meeting and work out the kinks and not do it in this platform where there's a bunch of people waiting for a swearing in.
Right. Yeah, we want, well, we want to move the business along, we've got a lot on the agenda here.
Correct.
Okay? So, there'll be something coming up in our packet that we'll deal with. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, have a good evening, I'm off to London.
Have a safe flight.
Enjoy the rain. Suspend the rules for the police wearing in. Chair recognizes Counsel Haddelberg.
Sure, I'd ask if we can make a motion to suspend the rules and do the swearing in of the new officers.
Seeing no objection, so move. Call the Fana Chief to come forward.
Good evening, everybody, on this warm evening, thank you to the city council president Leo Robinson, distinguished council members, acting city manager Keith, and everybody here for this wonderful night, even though it's warm. This is, I think my third time here in my short time of nine months swearing in new offices. We've lost hundreds of years of experience in the last year. Many would think that's a challenge, but I actually think it's a good thing. The four new officers tonight are trained so much better than the old officers like myself were trained 35-plus years ago. They live in the community, they're more reflective of the community, I think you'll see a huge difference. I also want to, besides acknowledging their hard work of going through a police academy for over six months, than the six months prior to a grueling background investigation is just the challenges their family and families had to encounter during that time. It's not easy if you're married with a significant other, mom or dad, to go through the academy and balance that life. And in the future, they're going to realize it's going to help them as many times they're going to miss holidays and family events because of their profession. So I thank them in advance for challenging themselves in difficult times being a police officer to accept the challenge and become a Chelsea police officer, so I'm very proud of them. So I think we're going to call patrol officers first. And I'm going to call, what's the time? All four at the time. Okay, we're going to call all four of the officers who just recently graduated the academy. They've actually been out in the street doing their field training with training officers and I believe they'll be starting on their own in the next coming days. So first, we're going to call Officer Albert Acevedo, Officer Kevin Diaz, Officer Jennifer Herrera, and Officer Rodrigo Fuentes.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, please state your name. Do solemnly swear and affirm that I will faithfully and impartially perform all the duties incumbent on me as a police officer of the Chelsea Police Department according to the best of my abilities and understanding agreeably to the rules and regulations of the Constitution and the laws of the Commonwealth, the Charter and the ordinances of the City of Chelsea. So help me God.
Thank you very much for the well-deserved applause for these officers. This is just as equally as important as the badge pinning. Again, there's sacrifice unknown to many people that are outside our profession, what families go through. So I'm very happy to call upon the officers who have picked people special in their lives to pin their badge. For Officer Acevedo, his wife Jennifer and son Aiden, to please come up. For Officer Diaz, his father Rodolfo Diaz, to please come up. And for Officer Herrera, her mother Ninette Horace and daughter Scarlett Menon Donca. And lastly, for Officer Fuentes, his sister Estefani Molina, to come up, please. I thank our new officers and I wish them Godspeed as they go through a long, healthy career serving you all in the community. Thank you, officers. Next we'll have a ceremony for the rank of sergeant. It's newly promoted Sergeant Kyle Meehan. A quick word on the sergeant, I know more of the officers who've been here longer than some of our new officers. Kyle Meehan's from a law enforcement legacy. His dad actually worked with myself back in the day, maybe in the late eighties, early nineties. His father-in-law just served this community for close to 40 years, just retired Captain Tom Dunn. And besides the law enforcement legacy, Kyle also served not only his community, he served our country in the United States Army from 2011 to 2014.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Kyle Meehan, do solemnly swear and affirm that I will faithfully and impartially perform all the duties incumbent on me as a sergeant of the Chelsea Police Department according to the best of my abilities and understanding agreeably to the rules and regulations of the Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth, the Charter and the ordinances of the City of Chelsea. So help me God. Congratulations.
And again, to me equally proud from, I'm sure for the sergeant, is the pinning of his badge of his wife, from his wife Elizabeth and his son Jameson. Little story, Jameson had to be bribed with candy, I believe, on his unofficial swearing in in the city manager's office about a week ago, so... Thank you, Sergeant. Okay, next is another family legacy of this police department, long history, long ties. It's going to be for newly promoted Lieutenant Joseph Fern, if he can come up here, please. Like Sergeant Meehan, he also has a history. His father, who was a mentor of mine, is in the audience, I can see him smiling. Sometimes you didn't get that smile when I worked for him, but tonight he's smiling. Senior Sergeant Fern had the unique ability to be kind, a little mean, and professional all at the same time. I don't know how he did it, but I always loved him, I always looked up to him. And you can see where now Lieutenant Fern, who outranks his father, got a lot of his qualities. So please congratulate Lieutenant Fern for his newly being sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. I, Joseph Fern, do solemnly swear and affirm that I will faithfully and impartially perform all the duties incumbent on me as a lieutenant of the Chelsea Police Department according to the best of my abilities and understanding agreeably to the rules and regulations of the Constitution and the laws of the Commonwealth, the Charter and the ordinances of the City of Chelsea. So help me God. Congratulations.
And again, one of the best parts of the evening is the legacy being passed on from his dad, who worked so hard here. The word "mean" was not accurate, Joe, I should have said, I don't know, I'll come up with a word. But if you know I love you, I bump into Joe everywhere. But he was a mentor of mine, so no better person to pin the badge on his newly son and lieutenant, retired Sergeant Joe Fern. I know you well. So I don't get sued by Joe, not a mean bone in his body, believe it's. Next is the rank of captain. First we'll just call up David Rizzuto, Captain David Rizzuto. Now, for the previous officers, I just, I felt kind of young with the previous pinning. I actually coached the captain hockey way back when he was probably 10 to 12, so that gives me my age. But Captain Rizzuto is the perfect person, he'll be actually taking over the community service division. And I think that's reflective of his wife's goodwill in the community and abroad. So I think it's a perfect blend, I think she would probably, a good person to bounce things off when you come home when you're trying to deal with the community events. So, we congratulate Captain David Rizzuto on his promotion.
Please raise your right hand. I, David Rizzuto, do solemnly swear and affirm that I will faithfully and impartially perform all the duties incumbent on me as a captain of the Chelsea Police Department according to the best of my abilities and understanding agreeably to the rules and regulations of the Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth, the Charter and the ordinances of the City of Chelsea. So help me God. Congratulations.
And lastly, for Captain Rizzuto's very special moment, we call upon his wife Saratine and his children Alberto, Dominic, and Gianna to come up to please pin the badge on the new captain. Thank you for all attending and I return at the podium back to the president of the city council. Thank you, thank you all.
Thank you, chief. Chair recognizes Counsel Brown.
We have a few minutes of suspension of the rules so we can give the families an opportunity to take pictures in the foyer here or outside, if that's okay?
That's fine, seeing no objection, so move. We will take a brief recess, so if you want to take some pictures, you're welcome.
I got a comment.
Want to call the committee back to order? The clerk will read the...
Next order of business, we have memoriam and celebratory resolutions. We have a resolution introduced by Counselor Taylor. Whereas Sarah Jackson was Director of the Chelsea Public Library from 2014 through 2023, previously serving as the Children's Librarian from 2008 to 2014. And whereas during her tenure as Library Director, Sarah oversaw multiple large capital improvement projects, including the Rotunda Dome. And whereas Sarah secured Federal Cares, ARPA, and LSTA Grants, state and local grants, the SHRAB Archival Grant, and the Moses J. Williams Junior Trust Endowment to the Friends of the Library. And whereas Sarah launched an adult book club, instituted the teen takeover, and created the teen center. And whereas attendance for the annual Chelsea Reads Literacy Day quadrupled during her tenure as Library Director. And whereas Sarah started the Library of Things, which has since expanded to include activities for adults, teenagers, and children, such as lawn games, a telescope, hotspots, a podcasting kit, laptops, and musical instruments. And whereas Sarah is beloved by library staff, trustees, and patrons for her dedication to ensuring the Chelsea Public Library continues to play a vital role in the community. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the members of the Chelsea City Council, thank Sarah Jackson for her years of service to the Chelsea Public Library and the residents of the City of Chelsea, and wish her the best as she moves on to her new career opportunity.
Chair recognizes Counsel Taylor.
I'd like to adopt under suspension.
See no objections. So move. You have the floor, Counselor.
Thank you. So when we heard that Sarah was going to be leaving us as the librarian, I think a lot of us felt the same way, like, oh. But I think that it's appropriate that the City Council recognize Sarah Jackson for the last 15 years for service to the Library. And I can tell you, from my perspective, she's done a great job in getting people more involved, coming to the library, especially the young people, which I really appreciate. Thank you so much for your service. We really appreciate you. We're sorry to see you go, but I know you're going to be, you know, back in connection with Chelsea. So thank you so much. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Chair recognizes Counsel Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I also want to begin by commending my colleague, Counselor Todd Taylor, because I echo his sentiments. Sarah, you have been an amazing contributor to this community. It's been 15 years of your service, leaving a mark in this community, and what better way to leave a mark than really showing the value of changing lives through reading, through books, and the power of education? Because your house can burn down, you can lose everything except education, and I think it's beautiful, the work that you've done. I used to be a volunteer at the library, and when I was a little kid in high school, I know that was when you started your journey at the library. So thank you so much for your service. Thank you so much for what you do, because it extends beyond from the library. You've created an amazing community. And in my role as a state representative, the Counselor here, Todd Taylor, asked me, along with the community that loves you, to present you an official proclamation and citation from the state. And I will be presenting that along with my colleagues for the incredible service that you've given to this community. We're going to miss you, but you leave a big mark in our community. So thank you so much, and this round of applause is for you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Sarah, again, I want to congratulate you on your work. I spoke to you and your husband out in the hall. We are so happy and so proud of your accomplishments here in our Chelsea Library. Your dedication, your work, your habits that you instilled in our library has made it more than just a place where you can return and pick up a book, but you can actually have an engagement. You opened the doors up to events, to seniors, to adults. Everyone felt welcome. You engaged that library. I'm so grateful to have the honor, the opportunity to wish you well in your next adventure. And I just want to just thank you really, you know, for your creativity that you displayed in the library. Your work will follow you, and I want to wish you all the well. Good luck, and thank you again for your service here in Chelsea. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Damali Vidal.
I don't want to keep repeating the same thing, but I'd not be me if I didn't acknowledge Sarah Gay. Growing up, I thought librarians were so boring, and you completely redefined what librarians can be. I want to thank you for the innovative ways in which you, the approaches that you had in reaching our community during COVID, inviting counselors to read to the young people, the Eclipse event that we had a few years ago, the teen takeover. Every time I reached out, you were always very responsive. We're so lucky to have had you, and you completely raised the bar for whoever's going to come in and has, they have some really big shoes to fill. So thank you. I wish you all the luck in all your future endeavors, and thank you for your service.
At this time, I'll recognize Counselor Taylor.
Mr. President, it asks that we suspend the rules and take a five-minute recess for photo op.
See no objections. So move, Counselor.
Thank you.
Come.
You're a nice librarian.
Chair recognizes Counsel Brown.
If there's no objection, I actually would like to make a motion. We pull out the appointments from the city manager and move to have a roll call vote on the adoption.
Thank you, Counselor. Seeing no objections, we will ask the clerk to...
Call the names.
Read the communication.
Dear Counselors, pursuant to Section 4-2 of the Charter of the City of Chelsea, I am writing to recommend the following individuals to boards and commissions in the city. For appointment to the Conservation Commission, Ms. Emily Van Heckulum of Chelsea for the recently vacated three-year term expiring December 2023. And for appointment to the Chelsea Housing Authority, Mr. Stanley Troisi of Chelsea to fill a city-designated position for the recently vacated five-year term expiring September 2, 2023.
Actually, we have a roll call vote, Mr. Clerk.
Counsel Brown has to have a roll call vote on the adoption.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Judith Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Cooperl?
Yes.
Counselor DeJesus?
Absent.
Counselor Hattlerberg?
Yes.
Counselor Vega?
Absent.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Nine members present, none opposed, two absent. The appointments are approved.
Appointments are approved. Any appointee who's here, you have to go to the city clerk's office when you have a chance, and they'll square you in. And thank you. Next order of business?
Public speaking.
Anyone here for public speaking? May take the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Get those guys. Good evening. I'm David Dayton from a small town in Vermont.
Can we get your name and address?
I'm an electrical engineer. I've worked on many of these projects over many years, and now I'm a volunteer, and I've been working... Sorry?
The mic.
Oh, name and address. So David Dayton, 228 Crozier Road, C-R-O-S-I-E-R, in Shaftesbury. Shaftesbury, S-H-A-F-T-S-B-U-R-Y. It's the end of a long dirt road. So I just had two things to say. One is I would invest my own money in this project. I support it very enthusiastically. I've worked on it for a long time, and I'm convinced beyond any reasonable doubt that it's a good financial investment and a good investment for the city. The other thing I want to say is I've worked with many cities over many years. You have staff here that can carry this out successfully. I have a lot of confidence in their ability to deliver this. So thank you, folks.
Thank you. Any other speakers for public speaking?
My name is Sarah Neville, and I live at 40 Eleanor Street. I'm also here to talk about the microgrid project, and I'm here to talk about my support for the microgrid project. Hang on one sec. Had to get YouTube going. So I know that a lot of people have come to talk to you about the technical details of the microgrid and all of that stuff that you're already aware of. So I'm here to kind of share a more personal story about the human impact that the microgrid can have. So what I did is I called my mother-in-law, Maribel Rivera, who lives in Manati, Puerto Rico, and I asked her some questions. And here's what she told me. After Hurricane Maria, the entire island of Puerto Rico was 100% out of electricity. We were out for 37 days after the hurricane, but we were lucky. Some people had no electricity for over a year. The system was down, not because they couldn't produce electricity, but because the grid itself was physically broken by the winds and the debris, especially the utility poles. The water supply also depends mostly on electrical pumps in Puerto Rico, and they didn't have enough generators for the pumps. We were out of water for nine days, and not even air was coming through the pipes. Then finally, after nine days, we started to get about a pencil-sized stream of water for some hours of the day. I don't know if words are enough to explain the emotional impact of this. It was so stressful, not knowing when we would get systems up, not knowing when people we knew would get electricity for their medical treatment. People were dying, especially the bedridden and the elderly, and my husband and I saw that all firsthand because we run a funeral home in Arrecibo. The hospital systems collapsed. Manati Medical Center, our largest hospital, was using their generators, but they got overloaded, and they were so overloaded that they had to start taking older ICU patients in ambulances to San Juan because they couldn't keep up with their care. I remember being outside the highway and seeing ambulance after ambulance after ambulance going down the highway. The heat was infernal during those 37 days because there were no greens anywhere. Every tree and shrub had lost all their leaves, and there was no power for AC. There was no fresh air, only heat. I remember laying in bed sweating, and getting up, there was an outline around where my body was on the bed like you'd see in a crime scene. In my fridge, everything perished. I had to open it up and throw everything out. We had to rely on canned food. To keep milk fresh for me and my elderly father's coffee, we had to put a container inside some water so it wouldn't spoil. Eventually, Church's Fried Chicken got a generator running, and they opened with a very limited menu, and we'd be in line in the drive-thru for an hour to get food because the demand was so high. I have PTSD, I can tell you right away. I think this is true for 80% of the people on the island. This week, there was a disturbance forming in the ocean, and immediately people rushed to the supermarket to get water. Every time we hear that there might be a tiny storm, I start checking my supplies for toilet paper and paper towels and whatever I can keep in the pantry.
One minute.
When my husband and I saved up and finally installed a solar-powered battery system for our house in 2021, it changed my mental health 180% from what I was feeling before. I finally felt a sense of security, that we were not going to lose all the food we have in the fridge, knowing that we could share an extension cord to our neighbor and to be able to have AC in an outage. It's amazing, and it's such a blessing, and I thank God every day. I'm so thrilled for you guys that you have the opportunity to have a microgrid in Chelsea. At our house, we were at the mercy of one utility company, Prepa, and so we got our own solar panels. Some mountain towns in Puerto Rico, like Utoado and Adjuntas, are building their own systems to get off the grid. If Chelsea also had a backup grid, it would be such a relief to know that you won't have to go through some of the difficulties we did. Thank you so much for listening. Although Maribel does not live in Chelsea yet, I'm hoping I can get her to move here, in 2017 and 2018, 13,000 Puerto Ricans moved to...
Thank you.
Massachusetts. I hope that we will be able to put in this project for even a little bit of resiliency and independence. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Take the podium and state your name and address for the record.
My name's Sarikay Ali. My address is 41 Jacques Street in Somerville. I'm an employee of Green Roots, and I've been working with Dave, Alex, and Ibrahim on this project for some... on this project, uh, for some time now. And I just wanted to voice my support for it. I think, um, it's really important to invest in clean resilience. Um, I have family who live in Lebanon, which is having its own power crisis that's been going on for some time. Um, and they've had to, they've been getting like two hours of electricity a day. I know that's an extreme example, but, um, they had to rely on diesel generators and there were so, there was so much diesel, uh, you know, they would have to wait two hours, uh, to buy it, to buy the fuel from the gas station. And, uh, my aunt describes just like the layers of soot that would coat their table, uh, on their balcony. And so, um, I think it's a wise investment and I hope you guys, uh, choose to make it.
Thank you. Any other speakers for public speaking? Seeing none, we'll close that portion of the meeting. Next order of business?
Next, we have approval of the minutes for the regular council meeting dating June fifth, twenty twenty-three.
Council, Council Brown moves accept and file the minutes under suspension, seeing no objections, so move. Next order of business?
Next, we have communications from the city manager. We have a copy of a communication received from Acting City Manager Ned Keef regarding approval of donation of fitness equipment to the senior center. Dear Councilors pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three A...
I ask that we waive the rest of the meeting, adopt unanimity under suspension. There'll be something coming up on the new business.
Communication will be accepted and filed under, under suspension. There'll be something coming up on the new business?
Next, we have a copy of a communication received from Acting City Manager Ned Keef regarding approval of donation of furniture police to the police department. Dear Councilors pursuant to Section three dash five of the City of Chelsea ordinances and Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three A, I am writing to request that the city council formally approve the donation of furniture to the city. Mr. Mustafa Ettehik, the owner of H&amp;H Furniture in Chelsea, offered the donation of new furniture to support the fit-out of the Chelsea Police Department.
I ask that we waive the rest of the meeting, accept unanimity under suspension. There'll be something coming up on the new business.
Council of the Ball moves accept and file a communication under suspension. There'll be something coming up on the new business?
Next, we have communications and petitions to the council. We have a copy of a communication received from the Traffic and Parking Commission regarding the agenda items approved at the meeting on June sixth, twenty twenty-three.
Chair recognizes Council Recupero. Under suspension, seeing no objections, so move.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Can I just speak on it very, very briefly? This, this, uh, it's kind of, so this is approving three handicap signs, um, in the community. And I just want, we, we keep seeing these come in front of us. And the fact that the city is not increasing the amount of handicap spots that we have really doesn't make much sense to me. I think we really need to think about our accessibility and, and the amount of parking that we have for people in the community that are differently-abled. So, I just wanted to make sure that we note that because we keep putting up handicap signs in the neighborhood. But for the city, we still have just the three parking spots outside. So, I just think it's something that we need to be aware of because there are people that need to do city hall business and don't have access to, um, parking. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor.
Mr. President, it says five handicap parking spaces downtown.
Downtown Broadway.
Yeah, not three.
There were five. Yeah, next order.
Next, we have a copy of a communication received from the Collins Center regarding extending the application deadline and adjusting compensation for the city manager. The city manager screening committee.
Motion to accept and file the communication and move it to a subcommittee?
Yeah. On conference.
On conference.
There'll be something coming up on the new business that we can, uh, talk about? Thank you, Councilor. Next order?
Next, we have unfinished business. We have unfinished business. We have an order introduced by Council President Robinson with regards to the Energy Management Service Agreement. Whereas the city administration through the North Suffolk Office of Resilience and Stability has procured and conducted an investment-grade audit through Mass. General Law, Chapter twenty-five A, Section eleven I, and two twenty-five CMR nineteen point zero for the purposes of installing and operating battery energy storage systems, solar photovoltaics, and identifying further energy conservation measures. And whereas the city's investment-grade audit of city-owned properties was performed by Amoresco Inc. and Amoresco Inc. has identified the...
Chair recognizes Council Haddelberg.
Motion to waive the remainder of the reading and adopt this by roll call vote. Speak on it briefly.
You have the floor, Councilor.
So, we have here's the first of two orders related to the microgrid proposal that'll come up before us. I'm sort of speaking about both of them now. Um, I have actually kind of enjoyed the process of learning more about this. I, I initially took this as a cost-savings proposal, was very cautious, trying to make sure I understood what went into it. Um, I am actually very grateful to staff for the work that went into presenting this to us. I believe that what we have here is an opportunity to begin the process of trying to build a more stable grid. I don't believe this project in and of itself is going to revolutionize the grid, but everything starts somewhere. And I believe this is a very important first step in making sure that we can build a more resilient grid here. Uh, it also has the particularly nice feature of looking like something that actually will be strongly financially positive for us. So, I, I think, um, I'm voting for this first as something that I believe makes sense to build for the city and second as something that I'm grateful to have some, some benefit for as well along the way financially. So, I'll be voting for both of these and just wanted to state my reasons.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Taylor?
So, I think I've been probably the most vocal skeptic on this project. Um, uh, I had a lot of questions in both subcommittees about both the financing and the safety aspects. In the second, um, in the second subcommittee, uh, attended by the fire chief, um, and I also, uh, found out from the vendor that the batteries in, in question, um, are the lithium iron phosphate batteries instead of the lithium ion batteries, uh, which, which make a difference, I think, in the, in the volatility and they're a little bit safer. Um, and the, the, the fire chief, even though he acknowledged, "I'm not an expert on any of this," that they would, that, that the, the project wouldn't present a real safety hazard. So, um, I accept his expertise on that and that, that, um, went a long way to help me make my decision on this vote. Um, let me, let me say this. I do not like the way the government is doing this. I don't like the way that they're basically trying to bribe us to do this project. I don't think that's the way that, that, that good government works. Um, however, I'm elected by the people of Chelsea and the only way that this project really makes sense is to have this money coming in from the state and the feds. So, the safety portion aside, I think that the financial risk in whether these batteries operate as advertised, I think is a real question. And I, I would, I would absolutely vote no on this, uh, if we weren't getting this money. However, I think it's probably worth the risk. There's a minimal, there's a minimal risk to this city, I think about five hundred thousand dollars in the overall scheme of things, um, if, as a worst-case scenario. I think that that's probably worth the risk of trying it out and seeing how these things operate. Are they gonna actually function as they're advertised? We'll see. I'm still a little skeptical about it, but I'm willing to give it a try. I'm all for new technology. I do like the resilience part of it. Um, and so, we'll see if they, you know, i-if it's gonna come as advertised, you know? I'd be, I'd be really, you know, interested in seeing if it, if it pans out or not. But I think the money that the city of Chelsea's actually putting up for this, I can live with it in order to try it out and see how it works. But I can assure you that I will be the first one, if it, if it doesn't operate as, as, as advertised, I will be the first one to try to put the kibosh on the rest of it. So, that being said, I intend on voting yes on both of these.
Councilor Vidal?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I, I too had some concerns, as my brother colleague mentioned, with the way that this was presented to us. Um, it just was all, it felt really rushed. But this idea of the microgrid project was presented to me when I was council president by a member of Green Roots, Kate Moss, who's not even here. She, she's since moved. And she was so passionate about it. And, and then I know that, uh, Green Roots has done extensive work. We're doing a feasibility study and working with the community development team to make sure that this was something that can get done. So, I just want to shout out, um, Green Roots for their work and for the staff here for what they've done. I am all for building clean resiliency. I have seen firsthand, I'm thinking about what the speaker just said, Dr. Sarah Neville, about what Puerto Rico faced when their grid felt, went down. And I know what's happened here firsthand when, when, when natural disasters strike and for, we get hit the worst. So, if there's any community that should be investing in this type of energy, it should be us. I will be one thousand percent supporting this. I believe, I believe strongly that my colleagues asked all the right questions and that people responded, um, responded in a way that feels safe to say that this is an investment worth, um, something worth investing in. What I will ask is that when the Amoresco representative came, he did say that they had a curriculum that they brought to schools so that young people can understand what microgrids are. I have had residents ask me, "What is this microgrid thing?" And I'm like, "I don't really know how to explain it." So, if we can make that accessible to the public, so people understand what we're investing in, I just think that, that's good for business. Um, it's great that we're gonna sit here and we can potentially approve all of this, but if the people don't know what we're doing, it doesn't make any sense. So, I just want to say thank you to everybody, especially the city staff, um, that came into, to, to a meeting where we didn't even meet quorum. Um, I appreciate you all taking time and all the work that's put into this. Thank you, Green Roots. Thank you, the gentleman from Amoresco. And I really do hope that we can make that curriculum available to the rest of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Chair recognizes Tenere Garcia, Councilor.
Hi, good evening. Um, so I want to say a couple of things about this microgrid. Um, I too, uh, had a couple of questions on the finance part of it. And yes, it's scary investing in something so big. Um, but I, I lived through Maria and I lost my home and I was ten months with no electricity and I washed my clothes in the river. Um, so, I would hate to see anything, obviously smaller than Maria, right? Because Maria was huge. Um, it happened to Chelsea and our community go through something horrific. Even if it's for four hours, we can save lives in those four hours. Um, I just, you know, I, I totally got PTSD because of the story. I'm not gonna lie. But I think that this innovative change to Chelsea is needed and, um, I will be voting yes because I too regretted not having a microgrid at home when Maria hit my home. So, yeah.
Judith Garcia?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, so I guess today we come full circle in terms of all the key players who are here. Um, I see members of Green Roots, key stakeholders and residents who are activists, uh, members of, of our city staff. I also see Fidel right there in the back. Um, and, and I bring you up because it took a long time to get the green communities designation. And that process helped us make it a little bit easier for us now where we are today. And I bring that up because, um, as Counselor Haddelberg mentioned, um, this was, this has been a collective process. In the back end, we've been having conversations, trying to understand what's the return to investment. And, um, I was able to identify at the state level, three funding opportunities that the state can put in in order to continue with this project. So, I think it is very important for us to have the collective responsibility as a city council to put in the seed to make sure that this project goes through because four hours can change lives. We need to be proactive about change and how we respond to emergency situations. We can't be reactive. So, I commend all the leaders who, especially Green Roots, who I know, um, has been an advocate for this for over years, um, and for our city administration for really pushing this through and seeking to work in partnership to bring this forward to us today. So, for my colleagues who are concerned about funding resources, we have resources at the state from the Department of Energy. I bring up the green communities because we got that done in twenty seventeen and that is going to facilitate a lot of these grants for our city to get, for us to get those grants. So, for funding purposes, if we're afraid, everyone should have received a copy of those funding opportunities with line items and direct contacts that we can reach out to for more funding. Um, but I think that life's at, at our stake and we need to do whatever we can to be proactive. So, I will be voting in favor of this.
Chair recognizes Council Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll also be voting in favor of this. Uh, I think one thing we should make clear here is that a lot of us had questions and because this was a process that started a few years ago, but it really only came to our plates in the last six months. So, we really had some problems with some of the ideas and some of the thoughts that were being talked. And two, we got the community meetings and we got the engagement. We were able to go in and talk about the funding. And as we did talk about the funding, we realized that there is significant amount of funding. Not only is there funding for the state, but there's the president's funding also, federal funding, which is over a million bucks that will also come in to enhance this. So, by having these conversations, by having these meetings, we came to the conclusion what you're hearing now. So, it wasn't just an overnight decision. What it was, was a collaboration of conversation and listening also into those networks and those groups that also stimulated that conversation in the early, um, stage of this year. Um, obviously, this, what we're talking about is an investment to the city of Chelsea. It's a clean energy investment. I look, um, forward to it. I think it's a huge, um, investment to our city. One of the things, um, our city has that other cities like is the work that's being done here. That's why you see guys like your city manager and our librarian and other folks moving on to other opportunities. And our newly, uh, our former, um, big guy here, Fidel, um, up and doing great work and I believe it's North Andover. Uh, because it's not just the city, it's what's being done in the city. So, we're doing a great, and also his wife, Maria, who's working on the state level, who's also helping us with the environmental justice. So, thank you for your efforts, what you're doing there. So, we're not babies about it. But what happened was that it came to our plate within a few months and we were thrashed on the vote and like without having discussion. And you've heard, some city councilor members said that there was meetings, but there was no quorum. So, there was really no meeting. It was just a discussion. So, I think this provides us an opportunity to continue to move our city in the right directions. Um, me and Council Taylor, we had a lot of conversation about the funding. I went to our city manager. Thank you for highlighting everything we talked about. And it was the investments that other people and other entities were investing into our community. So, it'd be a fool not to take it, right? The less, the worst thing can happen. At the end of the day, we have a twenty-year project. We're guaranteed ten, fifteen years of it. And at the end of the day, we lose out. But there's a greater thing, and Council Haddelberg talked about it. We have potentially to have buyers to buy in this to also generate resource to help us continue to use for our operation budget. So, as a, a city, I'm supporting this. I think we've done very good work here in the city of Chelsea. Um, for the most part, it's an advancement of our work that we're doing here. So, I want to thank everyone that was not mentioned that had a hand in doing this work and bringing us together. And also, I hope my colleagues, we can unanimously, unanimously vote in favor of this tonight with nine votes. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Chair recognizes Council Recupero.
I don't have a whole bunch to say. The only thing I can say is this. This is the beginning of the future for the city of Chelsea. I hope that it works out and in the distant future, the people of Chelsea will be able to reap the benefits from this. And in return, the city of Chelsea will be energy, energy sufficient for themselves and will lower the high cost of electricity. So, I'm in favor of anything that comes to save to the public or even for all of us. So, this is a good thing. Like they say, if you never try, you're never gonna know. So, try it and see how it works.
Thank you, Councilor. Yep. We'll call a roll call vote on the adoption. A yes vote will be for the adoption.
Council Brown?
Yes.
Councilor Judith Garcia? Absent.
Absent.
Councilor Tenere Garcia?
Yes.
Councilor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Recupero?
Yes.
Counselor Vidal?
Yes.
Counselor DeJesus, absent. Counselor Haddelberg?
Yes.
Counselor Vega's absent. Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Eight in favor, seven in favor, three opposed, one absent. Adopted.
Next order.
Next, you have the equipment lease purchase agreement.
Do you want to make a vote?
Yes.
Vote is recorded. Next, we have the equipment lease and purchase agreement. Whereas the city council of the city of Chelsea, a duly organized...
Sorry about that. Chair recognizes Counsel Haddelberg.
Motion to waive the remainder of the reading and adopt by roll call vote. This is the companion order on the same matter.
Thank you, Counselor.
Roll call vote. This vote requires a two-thirds majority vote of counsel. Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Hold on. Chair recognizes Counsel Taylor.
Sorry, I just wanted to say one other thing that I forgot to say before. Is I think that it's very important that whatever happens with this microgrid system, that it's very important that we do not let this devolve into a city utility. So I just wanted to get that on the record, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Well, I'll ask the clerk to roll call the members.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Judith Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Recupero? Counselor Vidal?
Yes.
Counselor DeJesus is absent. Counselor Haddelberg?
Yes.
Counselor Vega's absent. Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none opposed, two absent. Two-thirds being in the affirmative. The order passes.
Chair recognizes Counsel Haddelberg.
I would ask if other counselors are agreeable to it, that we take up under suspension all the financial orders that follow under second readings, with the exception of, I believe it's ENF, that require a separate vote on their own. But we can consolidate all these and take one combined order on all financial matters, if there are no objections.
Seeing no objection, we want a roll call.
One roll call?
One roll call.
For clarification, you will be voting on items B, C, and D, and then G through the rest of second readings on your agenda. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Judith Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Recupero? Counselor Vidal?
Yes.
Counselor DeJesus is absent. Counselor Haddelberg?
Yes.
Counselor Vega is absent. Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none opposed, two absent. Financial orders are adopted.
And for clarity, I'd like to explicitly include the order introduced gift for the senior center that's labeled A. It goes F-A-G, just to make sure we don't lose.
Next, we have an order introduced by Counselor Robinson establishing the opioid settlement stabilization fund and dedication of revenue. Whereas the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has reached settlements with several pharmaceutical companies to receive municipal opioid abatement payments. And whereas the opioid settlement funds have specific uses as outlined in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts State Subdivision Agreement wherein all the recoveries must be used to fund prevention, harm reduction, treatment, and recovery programs. And whereas the city council of the city of Chelsea desires to capitalize and realize the benefit of these funds. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chelsea City Council hereby adopts an opioid settlement stabilization fund in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40, Section 5B, in full accordance with the statute which may be expended for all the purposes allowed by law. Dedicate to such fund without further appropriation 100% of all opioid litigation settlement funds received by the city and directs the city manager to take any and all action necessary to accomplish this task. Roll call vote.
Yeah, Counsel Haddelberg moves for a roll call vote on the adoption. A yes vote to adopt.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Judith Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Recupero? Counselor Vidal?
Yes.
Counselor DeJesus is absent. Counselor Haddelberg?
Yes.
Counselor Vega's absent. Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none opposed, two absent. Order is adopted. Next, we have an order introduced by Counselor Robinson. Order that the city council appropriate $231,524.36 from free cash to the opioid settlement stabilization fund, which is equal to the amount received by the city from opioid litigation settlements in fiscal year '23.
Counsel Haddelberg moves a roll call on the adoption. A yes vote to adopt.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Judith Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Recupero? Counselor Vidal?
Yes.
Counselor DeJesus is absent. Counselor Haddelberg?
Counsel Haddelberg.
Counselor Vega is absent. Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none opposed, two absent. The order is adopted. Next, we move on to new business. We have an order introduced by Counselor Judith Garcia.
Chair recognizes Judith Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask that we remove this item from new business. It's been handled and addressed by the Traffic and Parking Commission. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor.
Order is withdrawn. Next, we have an order introduced by Counsel President Robinson. Order that pursuant to Section 3-5 of the City of Chelsea Code of Ordinances and pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 53A of Mass. General Law, the Chelsea City Council hereby accepts the donation from Lawrenceville LLC, the owners of the Hilton Homewood Suites Hotel in Chelsea, of fitness equipment to the Chelsea Senior Center.
Chair recognizes Counsel... Yes. Counsel Vidal moves for a roll call vote on the adoption, seeing no objections. Clerk will call a roll.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Judith Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Recupero? Counselor Vidal?
Yes.
Counselor DeJesus is absent. Counselor Haddelberg? Counselor Vega is absent. And Counselor Taylor? Nine in favor, none opposed, two absent. The order is adopted. Next, we have an order introduced by Counsel President Robinson. Whereas on January 9th, 2023, pursuant to Section 4-5 of the Chelsea City Charter, this council voted to appoint Edward Keefe interim city manager. And whereas Section 4-5 of the Chelsea City Charter restricts the appointment of an interim city manager to a term not to exceed three months, provided however that a renewal not to exceed an additional three months may be provided. And whereas the Chelsea City Council anticipated the need for an extension after the first three-month period and entered into a contract with Mr. Keefe, which ends in August. And whereas the chairman of the city manager's screening committee does not anticipate completing the search process until after the city's contract with Mr. Keefe expires. And whereas the Chelsea City Council does not have the authority pursuant to the charter to extend Mr. Keefe's tenure as acting city manager any longer. And whereas Mr. Keefe is not a resident of Chelsea. Now therefore be it ordered that the Chelsea City Council hereby appoint Edward Keefe, city manager, for a term not to exceed two years and will immediately expire upon the city council's selection of a successor city manager. And be it further ordered that the Chelsea City Council authorizes Counsel President Leo Robinson to enter and negotiate a further employment agreement to end two months after a subsequent city manager is appointed, as recommended by the city solicitor or her delegate with Mr. Keefe. And be it further ordered that the Chelsea City Council waives the residency requirement pursuant to powers granted to it in paragraph four of Section 4-1 of the Chelsea City Charter.
Chair recognizes Counsel Haddelberg.
Motion to move this to a subcommittee on conference.
When would you like the conference to be held?
As soon as possible.
Well, I'd like to come in Thursday night if it's possible with the committee.
I will advise my motion and make it a motion to accept the order as written, so adopt it by roll call vote, as long as people are willing to vote on it.
All right. Seeing no objections, anyone want to speak on the matter?
Yeah, I have questions. I guess my question is, if we're in the process of trying to select a city manager, why are we extending it two years? I asked the city solicitor prior to the meeting, and she said because some of the charter language is kind of tricky. But I want the public to understand, because it doesn't mean that we're just ignoring the city manager's selection process, but more so honoring what the Collins Center said in terms of needing more time and requesting a higher salary to hopefully get more candidates for the position. But I guess, just for the public, I would like the city solicitor to address us and at least explain why we're doing it for two years and not one year or six months. I just...
It's a little tricky because you shouldn't really be speaking. If I may, I will try to explain it so we can understand. Or if you would like the city solicitor to address it, I have no objection to it. I'll ask the city solicitor to address the council.
To you, Mr. President. Counsel, the charter is very specific as to how you appoint the next city manager. And the charter limits, can you hear me? The charter limits the amount of time that you can appoint someone to be interim, three months and then another three months. So what has been recommended is that you appoint a city manager until you finally could. But then when you read the charter, the charter says that no contract for city manager could be less than two years. So we're just bound by a lot of words that are, a lot of provisions of the charter that we want to comply with. I believe Mr. Keefe is aware that, in reality, his appointment is until you find a new city manager.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that the folks know that we're not abandoning the selection process. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. And also, so he can carry out the duties as the city manager, as opposed to acting city manager.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
So he can carry out the duties of a city manager as opposed to acting city manager. And that's the reason why we put this forward, so that we can keep the process moving.
So the motion on the floor currently is to adopt this, right?
Yes, by a roll call vote.
Okay.
I'll ask the clerk. Any other speakers on the matter? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call a roll call on the adoption. A yes vote will be to adopt.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Judith Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Recupero?
Yes.
Counselor Vidal?
Yes.
Counselor DeJesus is absent. Counselor Haddelberg?
Yes.
Counselor Vega is absent. Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none opposed, two absent. The order is adopted.
Thank you, counselors.
Can you just tell us when this will take effect? Because we still had him up until a certain amount of time.
Well, what we have in place, this is going to take what we have in place.
This is going to supersede, so as of today, he become the city manager?
Yeah.
Just wanted to be clear and the public to know. Thank you.
In order for us to be able to move forward and doing business, we needed to do this. Next order, please.
We have our last order. We have an order introduced by Counsel President Robinson. Order that pursuant to Section 3-5 of the City of Chelsea Code of Ordinances and pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 53A of the Massachusetts General Laws, the Chelsea City Council hereby accepts the gift to the Chelsea Police Department of three new couches valued at $1,597 from Mr. Mustafa Etteek, H&amp;H Furniture, 306 Broadway.
Move to adopt by roll call vote, Mr. President.
Yes, Counsel Vidal moves for a roll call vote on the adoption. A yes vote will be to adopt it.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Judith Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Recupero? Counselor Vidal?
Yes.
Counselor DeJesus is absent. Counselor Haddelberg?
Yes.
Counselor Vega is absent. Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none opposed, two absent. Order is adopted.
We have a late order. Are there any objections? You want to withdraw your order?
We accept the late communication from the city manager, and then the council wants to speak.
Thank you, Counsel, for putting it out. Your order is withdrawn. You want to speak on the information? Yeah, that's an FYI. Yes, you can speak on it, Counselor.
To the people of Chelsea, the city council did not know that we had a meeting. None of us were notified about the new rates that were there, water and the trash rates. So now we're going to have a subcommittee on it. We're going to have a new subcommittee to determine these. The whole thing is that we were notified. The people that asked me, that said, "I come..." We did not know that this was happening. So this is what I wanted to tell the people, that the city council did not know that the new water and trash rates were set. We didn't know anything. So that's the only thing I want to say. But now the rates are here, that Mr. Ned Keefe gave it to us. So they're over here. Now we're going to have a subcommittee figure it out if we're going to approve them or not. Thank you.
You request on a subcommittee?
No, no subcommittee.
DPW does a public hearing. And the last public hearing, we weren't notified, but everything went out in the water bills, letting people know that there was going to be a public hearing. It also was in the Chelsea record.
I'll take that back. No subcommittee, just accept and file this communication.
Thank you, Counselor. Any public announcements? Counsel Recupero?
In June, the policemen are wearing cameras now, so be aware that the policemen are wearing cameras. So it works both ways. It could be in your favor, it could be against you. So just remember that the policemen are wearing cameras now. Thank you.
Counsel Brown?
Thank you. Hello, everyone that's not here, that's on TV land. Just an announcement that as of July 5th through August 13, the Summer Tunnel will be closing. And we have got some notice from them, some good news, that because of the closing from July 5th to the 31st of August, there will be some bus, freeride buses in Chelsea. But you have to listen very closely. 111, 112, 114, 116, 117, and the SL3. All these will be free to us here in Chelsea, inbound only. Inbounds only. So that's Chelsea-Bellingham Square, Box District, Eastern Ave, Airport Station. So remind yourself, as of the 5th, you're probably going to see a lot more traffic in our community. That's the negative impact of it. So we're asking that you have a little patience, a little concern for those that's walking and those that's not as good, quick drivers as yourself, and be very careful. We will be out of session for a few weeks, but we will be able to be contacted here at the city council. I'm sure every city council will take the call to get back with their constituents if there's an urgency. But please feel free to give us a call. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Counsel Vidal.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to give a big shout out to the Chelsea Black community for an amazing Juneteenth event that they had last Sunday. It was a beautiful event. It was even better than it was last year. It was intergenerational, interracial.
It was intergenerational, interracial. It was so good to see the entire community coming together to celebrate such a good cause. I just want to tip my hat off to Joan Cromwell. And I really want to acknowledge our DPW workers. Because I think, you know, we often, you know, we give praise often, but we don't really realize the amount of work that goes into setting up and taking everything down and cleaning, keeping everything clean, particularly buildings and grounds and on the streets and sidewalks. So I just want to make sure to acknowledge DPW and thank CBC for their amazing work in the community.
Thank you. Any other counselors? Counsel Judith Garcia?
Thank you, Mr. President. So thank you, Counsel Brown, for bringing that up. I do want to acknowledge this work of the suburb mitigation was not a part of the initial project. Thankfully, my office at the State House, along with Alex Train and the city administration, Ned Keefe, our police chief, and also some key stakeholders of this community, we had conversations to make sure that we were able to achieve all the mitigation plan that the counselor here acknowledged. So yes, this will be free for that month. But I also want to make mention and acknowledge those that were part of that conversation when we were asking for these concessions. One other thing I will say is there is more to come, so we hope to have more updates. I know that Ned Keefe is leading some conversations in terms of more support for public safety, but also we are looking to bring a little bit more in terms of the East Boston Bridge. We are advocating to stop the passage of boats during peak hours, which we know is a burden for our residents. So stay tuned, there's more to come. Thank you.
Counsel Lopez?
Thank you. I would like to remind the residents about 4th of July is coming. And I know we celebrate the independence of the United States, but I just want to let people know that there is a rule and regulation that we should respect the elderly, the children, our pets, the veterans who have PTSD. And please be careful, don't do this. This is illegal in Chelsea and in the state of Massachusetts. If you get caught doing this, you're going to get a fine of $300. So please be respectful. And also, all the trash that you guys are making when you're doing the fireworks. Thank you.
Seeing no other speakers. Wish everybody a safe 4th of July. So play safe, play smart. Seeing no further business before this council. We are, anyone for a moment of silence? It's fine.
Also, if we could just keep the family of the 14-year-old girl that was hit on the, by the car here over by former, I think it's called Rise.
That's Rise.
Rise?
Rise.
Rise. So keep that family in prayer. That family's still going through a difficult time. Of a driver also is going through a difficult time right here.
And also, I told the people in Newton that got killed at their house.
All right, thank you.